No, I know what it is. It says it wants to say.
Are we ready?
Yeah.
All right. Welcome everyone to our, we're starting the father meeting. Uh, work session. It is February twenty seventh this time of college order. Mr. Schley, would you pray for us?
I'd be glad to. Let's hope you wouldn't work for air. Father, thank you for the video of the day that you give it to us. The opportunity and the privilege that you give it to us to come to this place, Lord, to gather together, conduct this county, participate in our government. Father, thank you for the privilege that we have to serve our community. Father, our hearts be heavy, we pray for the family of Paul Reedus. Father, I pray that you would just give them a peace that passes all understanding. Father, that you would lift up and underhurt that family. Father, that citizens of Rankin County rally around that family, Lord, provide the support they need in this time. Father, I pray that you give these men the wisdom that they need this morning so that they can make decisions that are in keeping with your will and Christ's favor.
I mean.
Thank you very much. Um, Carl, you want to go ahead and give a quick comment? That way.
Yeah, you can go first so you don't have to fall up. You know, usually you're saying, oh, gosh, I had to fall behind that.
You're right. Usually I'm a hard act of policy. Hopefully, this won't be too hard this morning. I've got just a couple of issues and none of them are really done with courthouse. Uh, they're mostly re-roofing. Uh, one, I think you have before your pay application, the final pay application for the DHS roofing. Uh, if you may remember, the original low bid was a hundred and four thousand, three hundred and fifty. Uh, but that included a contingency allowance, which is not going to be all used. So, the final price is ninety-one thousand, this is fifty dollars and twenty-five cents, which results in a reduction of thirteen thousand, two hundred, ninety-nine dollars and seventy-five cents, which will come back to the county. So, we're recommending approval of that pay application by M and S Roofing.
It's on March second.
It's on down there?
It's on March the second.
All right, okay. All right.
Got any questions? I guess I can answer that.
Other than that, how's things going?
Uh, they're going good. I do have another change order.
Go ahead. No, it's on for today, the change order.
For the E O C building. Uh, the change order is involved a couple of things. One is four hundred dollars to relocate next to their light fixtures because when we were doing the new downspouts, there was conflict there. The other part of that change order was, uh, when we got, see, looking at the building, eventually I could take its tough off. We found out that we, uh, it has eastus, artificial synthetic stucco on it. And parts of it, when they put the existing, the original downspouts on it, they cut holes and they didn't go back and refinish it, so it just left it exposed. So, that's, that's a problem. It needs to be refinished there. But in doing that, uh, Mr. Ward asked us to look at just refinishing that entire exterior. Probably good.
So, we asked, we asked the contractor to give us an estimate to refinish the exterior and he gave us a price of right around twenty-two thousand dollars to do that. Uh, now, that would serve two purposes. One, it would refinish it to give it a cleaner look, but it would also have to seal that exterior, uh, just to prevent any additional moisture penetration. Where we stand on the cost of that building is, um, let's see, let me go through here and make sure I give you the right figures. Uh, the original bid was a hundred and ninety-two thousand. We added some metal panels, which came out of the contingency allowance, uh, which left the balance of five thousand, four hundred dollars. If the board so chooses to go forward with, with this change order, uh, that would mean that instead, it would be seventeen thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars add, which would make the total final price of two hundred, nine thousand, five hundred and twelve. Uh, I don't know, Mike, do you want to talk about your concerns about that or reasons for doing that?
Sure. The, uh, the thing, if you guys have been down there, I know you have, and you've seen the building, the, uh, it's the stucco on the facade, where they've cut it, it's, there's bad places in it. It is leaking water, uh, to the inside. We obviously need to get that repaired and fixed. And at the end of the day, it's either going to have to be repainted or restuccoed anyway. And if they're going to restucco it, it would make sense to go ahead and, and reskim the entire building is, uh, what I asked Mr. Franco to look at to bring to you guys, uh, if that's your pleasure to do that, so.
Is that, is that what you're, what you were talking about?
Yeah.
Okay. Who's Mr. Ward?
Ward.
Oh. Did I have, okay, that's just my, uh.
I've called a lot of things over the last two weeks, so it's all right.
We actually had a ward, Ward.
All right.
Well, I got a question. You can't just restucco the, the places that are going to have to be cut and whatever and then repaint that?
Sure.
Uh, what I'm saying, what you're saying, re-stucco the whole thing?
No, I'm, I'm saying, let, they got to repair the places that are bad anyway.
Yeah.
So, they're going to have to mix or stucco up.
Right.
And while they're at it, since the crew's already there, just have them just do a light skim coat over the whole thing, which essentially is painting the building.
Okay, all right, I see what you're saying.
What's the difference in patching it and doing the whole thing?
There is about, we, I think we got, and I'd have to confirm this, uh, Steve, but I think there was seven thousand dollars to patch it and correct it as opposed to, uh, twenty-two thousand dollars, uh, is what I'm thinking it was. I need to go back and verify that. They don't, the reason, and the reason, it may even be higher than that. The reason is, is, is the labor and they got to have somebody there, so the unit cost on patching is just really high as compared to just reskimming, reskimming.
And if you don't, uh, you're never going to get to match.
No, it's not going to be.
You'll always know that.
Right. It's going to look hatched in some way.
So, what was the first roof you were naming off?
The first one was DHS, the pay application on it, so it's.
I thought we were going to research and find out.
Nah. I've got another one. I'm, that's the third one I'm coming up with after that.
All right, all right. Go ahead.
Well, that's where we're at on the E O C. If, and if you want to go ahead, while you're thinking about this, the, the C M R, the Central Region Mississippi Library Roof System. We have investigated that and I have come up with some preliminary cost figures, but I, just to kind of help explain, I've got some pictures of that. That's, that's where, you know, your central library system is, plus the downstairs is the county maintenance. We haven't done any work on that. We, we just, we just got on there enough to look at it. It's approximately five thousand square foot roof. It's a single membrane roof PVC. I don't sure how old it is. We were told that it wasn't that old, but you can see the pictures if you start on the top row going left. That's kind of the condition of the roof, that first picture. The second one is where they tried to patch the leaking on the skylights, uh, which are leaking. There's approximately seventeen to twenty leaks in the building. We don't know the history of the roof. We don't know, we don't have any drawings. We don't know how old it is. We were told it was barely new. If you go down to that second row and you go all the way to the third picture from the left, that's the sump pump. They put that, somebody put that in there because apparently every time it rains any significance, they have to get up on the roof and sweep the water off. Part of the problem is the slope of the roof, the roof drains are higher than the slope. It slopes toward interior roof drains and by the time it gets enough water to get to the roof drains, it's three or four inches. Uh, and you can see down at the bottom, some of the standing water. Another thing they have on there, they, and, and we don't know the history behind this, they have three rooftop units and they've added, if you look on that bottom row to the right, the last picture, they've added some type of, of makeup. We think it's some kind of fresh air thing that's rusted and everything else. Don't know how old those units are, if they're working properly. But one of the things when you're re-roofing, you have to do when you got rooftop units is you have to work around them and re-flash them and curve it. And what generally happens there is that just causes, uh, additional leaks. We think those units, rooftop units, may be leaking water through them anyhow. We don't, we don't know. Only do that is test it to see.
A lot of times they have to take all those units off.
Exactly.
They take completely off, re-roof it, and then they build the curbs back up and put them back on.
That's exactly the way you need to do it. And so, you got to have a crane out there to do it. And then you get into the, the mechanical people don't want to, you know, the roof people don't warrant the units. Uh, I don't know the, how the units are, but the most economical way to do it, if they're old, is to replace them while you're doing this. And then you got new units and then, then everything's warranted. If you're just looking at costs, the costs are going to vary. Just for re-roofing it, it's probably going to be about a, uh, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We're recommending with the skylight to just take the skylight off and close that up, uh, and solve that problem. You probably need to come in and add some light fixtures in the center because that does provide some light. Uh, it's got a unique condition and it's got an exterior curb. You make them seem in some of those pictures. What we were saying, if, if the board wants to go forward, what we think the best solution to avoid the interior roof drains is to use tapered insulation, slope all this to the outside with, uh, gutters and downspouts. That way, you get the water moving in a positive direction. You don't have to worry about interior leaking of, of, uh, interior roof drains.
You're going back to same rubber roof?
Yeah, we'd go back with a single. And, and, and one of the reasons, uh, I think, again, we don't have any drawings, but what we can tell, this is a wood roof structure and you don't want to, you know, it'd probably be okay to put some additional weight on there, but we, we don't want to put too much weight, uh, on, on that because we just don't know what it was designed for. Uh, just my opinion, it appears that this re-roofing was done, uh, it may have been done. I don't know how it was done, but we can't find any drawings on it and it's not done in a, in a way that seems like it'd be a good way to work. So, it could have been done on, you know, just on a con. But if, if the board wants to go forward with this, depending on what you do with the return air units, it's going to be somewhere between a hundred and fifty and probably two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. If you don't do the return air units, return air units, the, the providing new return air units, probably going to be twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars. Rooftop units, not return air units. But the, if you did that, then you, they would have their own self-contained fresh air makeup. You wouldn't have this add-on that you see in those pictures.
I don't know what that is.
I'm not sure either. That's what, it, I think, my, my opinion is, Jared, the codes have changed and they had to add some fresh air makeup and that was added after the fact.
Well, the price you gave us, is that to take care of all these issues or is that just for a roof?
Uh, well, just for the roof would be about a hundred and fifty thousand, but if you want to take care of all the issues, it's going to be about two hundred and fifteen thousand at this point.
I said two hundred.
Let me ask you. Brad had a question. Has this always been a county-owned building?
Yes, for a long time. It used to be the health department.
Okay, that's where, it wasn't.
It was the health department many years ago, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And I have researched to the best of my ability and I cannot find when we put a roof on this. I've gone back through our inventory, which, you know, roofing, because it adds additional use life to the building, would have to be in there. I cannot find it in our inventory. I have looked back probably for eight to ten years and I cannot find in any fund where we replaced it.
I know when we remodeled it, I don't think we put a roof on it.
I don't think we did either.
What's the warranty on the PVC roof?
It's usually twenty years.
New one in Pearl? So, we remodeled the new library over there.
It's what, what we're specifying on, the new roof we're putting on for you guys is twenty-year warranty.
Pro-rated.
Yeah, probably, it is pro-rated, so it.
Yeah, I understand that.
Uh, it, you know, it's like a car. It starts depreciating from day one.
Soon you drive it off.
That's right.
I don't think we roofed it then either, Josh.
Well, we, we can't, we can't either. We, the only, our only information was talking to some of the maintenance people. At least, they told us it was fairly new. Now, it doesn't look, I don't know, it's hard to tell.
I don't know when it was done because that would have been, what, closer to what we could figure, ten years ago.
So, that's, uh.
So, we didn't roof it then. So, I don't know.
I know we have a little extra millage on there. So, will that pay for this?
Well, that's under application. I don't think that we can use.
No.
You're using every penny of that.
Oh, man.
And I, you know, I don't need, this is just for information purposes. I'm not looking for a decision from the board. I just, but.
I don't think we have much choice, do we? I mean, if it's leaking in fifteen places.
It's only seventeen leaks.
Yeah.
You got, the sump, the sump pump thing shows you that's been a prob, it's been a problem.
It has been a problem, that's right.
A long time.
They, I, I think they added the sump pump because, like I said, what we were told is they having to get up on the roof and sweep the water off.
Well, I imagine so. I mean, and otherwise, why, I've never seen a roof with a sump pump.
No, I, this is my first one too. We never designed one. Uh, that's, that usually is indication of a problem.
Yeah, yeah, that was.
All right. So, uh, the, the other two that we've already given the go-ahead on, where does this one come out of?
Um, out of, uh, well, one of them is, and it's just about going to deplete it. We had a fund that was left over capital projects from years past that I'm emptying for the rest of the year to come out of maintenance.
So, we're going to have to amend their budget for sure.
Have to amend their budget. But this thing has leaked, I know, for years and years. They called us and complained about it.
So, what do you need to go ahead and get everything lined out to address our issues there?
I just need the board to authorize us to, to.
Let me ask you one thing. Now, you're talking about going under, what you're talking about, going back under, uh, to crown it with like that, that foam stuff?
Uh, it's rigid insulation. It'd be rigid insulation.
Right, yeah.
And, uh, so it's built up, uh, it's like made a quarter inch or foot. And what we, what we would like to do, interior roof drains work, work, you know, fine, but there's always potential. So, what we're saying on these smaller buildings, just to get it to the outside, get it gutters and downspouts and.
Oh, I, I agree.
And so, that's what we're looking at. And we would use a similar type roof, but we'd use a tapered insulation. And the other thing that does is give you a little bit extra, uh, insulation for the roof, which is in the south. That's a key. It's not going to make that much difference, but it would help some maybe on your energy usage.
Well, and, um, and you're going to get the extra stuff like skylights, which are right, anything you take off the roof.
Yeah, we.
Less leaky.
I just think, you know, the skylights.
I agree.
It's just trying to, ideally, we want to try and get everything off the roof we can. Now, we're talking, we look, we talked about, I talked, I looked into getting to the rooftop units. But I, I'm not sure that wouldn't be extremely costly. You could put them on the ground as package units, but then you got to have space to run all that duck and, and I just don't, we hadn't, we hadn't investigated far enough to see.
Yeah, I, I wondered that, but I didn't say anything because I don't know where you're going to run the duck.
Yeah, and we don't, apparently, there's no drawings on this building that we can find either, unless y'all know something. So, we don't know exactly what that would involve.
Right.
We could certainly look into that, but I'm afraid it is going to be a lot more money is what I'm thinking it is.
We are pricing the cost of the building now.
No, yeah. No, I think you're going to have to leave the rooftop units on there, but.
And what I can do, I can get some, I can get an engineer to look at them and, and see how, what, what the life expectancy of them are, if you're interested in looking at replacing them.
No, I don't think so. We want to go look.
Replace, what, replacing, you, you talking about?
The units.
Units.
Looking at replacing the units.
Well, yeah.
Twenty years old.
Right, if they're old, if they're near their life expectancy, uh, because whenever, if you don't replace them, whenever you do, you're going to need to get a crane back out there anyhow. So, just, the, long-term, it would be more economical to do it now, if they're nearing their life expectancy. And they, these units usually have fifteen, twenty-year life expectancy. I have no idea how old they are. But I don't know, that box that was added, I don't know what that is. We don't really know what that is either. But some, but it, it's not, that's not the way it's done nowadays.
Well, that's enough bad news. You have any good news for us?
Glad you went first.
Courthouse is finishing up.
The, the schedule that I have from them is still, is still in March. I'm saying no sooner than April. I, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to lie. You know, I am, I, I'm Catholic, so I can go to confession and we just started Lent, but I'd just rather not go through that, that, uh, I want to be honest with you.
What are you giving up for Lent? You're, you're not going to talk about courthouse, right?
No, I already go to two churches and my wife is Baptist, so I, I may have to go to a third. So, uh, but, but that's helping a little bit. But that's, they are making progress if, if you walk through there. They've got, uh, they've got a pretty good amount of woodworking there. We're supposed to get the judges benches in this week and set them. So, it's just, uh.
Have they got the building sealed off all the way?
Mm-hmm.
What about parking lot?
The parking lot, they've got part of the rough, of the base paving in, but every time they get ready to start it, it rains. Uh, I mean, it's, it's unbelievable. And then, they, I don't think they got flooded last week. We almost got flooded at our building, but they, I don't think they did.
Yeah.
But that's where we're at, uh.
All right. Good deal. I'm glad I let you go first. Not really.
Set the tone for the rest of the meeting.
All right. Uh, at this time, we're going to call our planning commission meeting to order. Uh, do we have approval of the minutes?
Some of them.
Question by Jared.
Second.
Second by Daniel. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
All right, have it. Old business.
There is no old business.
All right, new considerations.
The first item under new considerations is a conditional use permit for Lance and Russell Varner at thirty-six sixteen Highway eighteen. This property is located on the west side of Highway eighteen. And the Varners are seeking the conditional use permit to relocate their fireworks business to that new auction eighteen building, um, during fireworks season as regulated by state law. It's a total of eight point seven nine acres, but the, uh, building sits on, uh, one point eight acre, eight oh acres shown in blue. This property is Zone C three. That's an aerial view of the property. And that's their original site plan. That's the new building there. The building will be used for the sale of fireworks only during, uh, the period that's allowed by state law. No auctions would be held during that time. Uh, this is a view of the new building on eighteen. And the Varners are here if you have any questions for them. That's their existing building.
What are the regulations on fireworks things that, like the building? Do they have to be sprinkled?
It does, yes, sir. And they're working on that. These are surrounding properties.
The sprinkler, uh, from what I've heard, is going to cost around fifteen thousand dollars. They want to make sure they can get a conditional use permit before boring, because they're going to have to bore us, a line, a six-inch line to the building.
Oh, to get water?
To get water. And they were willing to do that, but they just.
Where was your old one at? Across the road?
No, right beside.
Yeah, this, uh, yeah, we, uh.
Off road.
There's a fact, I mean, we're, that's, that's right by the end to the right, right there. Uh, that's what we've been doing for the last twenty years.
Big buildings to the left.
So, we've been there. In fact, I mean, that, you know, we can always be in that building, but we were trying to, since we built a new building, use half of it. We even built a wall in the middle to drop the door and build a, have that, whereas then we found out you can't have fireworks and the auction at the same time. So, that kind of messed up that plan. Uh, so now, yeah, like I said, you can't, you'd have to have a, that's all kinds of stuff. I don't know. We, all kinds of codes, I think.
Okay.
But now, we're trying to sprinkle it. We have to sprinkle the whole building to do the fireworks in it. And, um, because of the code, I think that's, that's been, you know, enforced now, so.
Well, you already know all the regulations for the coast of fireworks that you've been running it.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. I mean, like I said, we're, and this, of course, this building right here, we're grandfathered in because we've been here, we, to do it in a new building.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, we have to sprinkle.
You did.
What are you going to do with that building?
Well, that's something that we, we, right now, we got to see about the, how much the sprinkling and all that's going to cost, but we want to go and get the conditional use. Hoping to move the fireworks into the new building, but we may still do fireworks right out of there. We let a granite countertop use it for an office space in between.
But you're not going to have it in two different places though, right?
No, no, it'll only be one, one location. If we end up getting, getting this approved and we do the sprinkling, we'll move into the new building twice a year. Uh, if not, we'll just keep on selling fireworks from our, our former place, but we'd love to put it in the new place. It'd be a little more space, it'd be a little bit bigger. So, we, uh, and, uh, we already had it, we already got it rigged up looking nice, but might, we might as well do some more stuff out of it. So, uh, but that's, uh, that's where our auction building is and it's been, but, uh, that's it.
Your parking lot looks a lot better than just gravel.
Well, we're working on it. We're working on it. It is, uh, it has rained ever since we built the building. And so, if y'all just be patient with us, we'll have the place looking even better once we can get it dried out. So, we're.
They have done a lot of work. I've been in it sometimes and it's, it's nice and it's handicap accessible. They got concrete on the front, pull up.
And we, uh, we try and we're, we're running two, two to two hundred and fifty folks every Thursday night. This, uh, yeah, we're, we're packed out every, for the auction. So, it's been a blessing, so. We definitely needed the building. We didn't know we needed, but now we, we.
I'm good with it.
As far as the sprinkler system, uh, yeah, I mean, we're, I think we're probably around, with the boring and everything, you're probably around twenty-five, I think we're looking at twenty-five to twenty-eight thousand, uh, to do a sprinkler system, uh, is what, what's in the, that's with the, you know, the line and everything over.
Yeah, pretty many.
Yeah, so that's, that's what we're dealing with right now, so.
Renee, who, who regulate, I mean, I'm not saying I'm far against, but who regulates the sprinklers? Is that county by county or is that state or?
The code, the building code requires the sprinkler because that is a, a high hazard or hazardous use.
I'm just saying, is that something that the board of supervisors?
The state, um, through the, um, state rating bureau and the, um.
Fire marshal.
But we, we, we also adopt that code.
Yeah. Like Madison hadn't adopted the code then, is that?
Well, they may have adopted an older version of it. All right, so there's different versions of the codes out there. We, we have, we have to adopt the code.[1514.11]
What's it called, NF something?
NFPA is actually, it's not really the code. It really falls back more to that Southern Building Code that ties into NFPA on the same side, so it's, we adopt it, but we kinda go with the state building code on.
The, the, the uniform code, Steve? That's never uniform, ever.
I got you.
It's case by case.
I've had people complain and say, well, I don't have to do this in Madison County. Why y'all making me do it here? And so, I don't know, we just are, I don't know.
Each jurisdiction can decide how deep they wanna go into the code, basically.
The short answer to your question is, you guys adopt the code, and it is enforced through your community development organization, and there is a cooperative agreement with the rating bureau and fire and insurance commissioners' office to assess or address whether or not an individual use is compliant with the code.
Guess what Steve's saying, though, I mean, is there a guideline?
There's some things we can't control, like schools.
The building code, the building code, it's been in place since.
Okay, so Simpson, so Simpson County or Madison County may not adopt it, and so they may not require sprinklers in their building?
Well, Simpson doesn't even have a building inspector. Simpson doesn't even have a building inspector.
I know, but I'm saying if it's a code set by the state.
No, no, we, we adopt various versions. As it come with updates, we'll adopt the new updates.
Or, or, or we don't have to. We could stay within the existing code if we like. Each jurisdiction can choose which code they want to enforce for their area minus schools and things like that, right? So we.
We did what we did, which was to adopt parts of the uniform code and not other parts of the uniform code.
And I, I would be fine if y'all unadopted.
When he said, when he said you guys, he very loosely said that.
If y'all agree, y'all could unadopt it, no, I'm kidding.
Because if, if something happens with fireworks in there, you're not gonna put it out.
Now, I'm gonna tell you, we're gonna go watch fireworks shows, to be honest with you, if that ever happens. But the, the thing with us, we even have a fire station behind us, and, which is, you know, to us, we, we even thought, maybe, maybe we could put in a, you know, you know, and I know this is not something from the code, we can, but we said, maybe we could even put, you know, something right behind us, like, what do you call those things? Fire hydrant, fire hydrant. Yeah, you could put a fire hydrant right behind the building. We could put like, we even said, man, is there any way we could do a, you know, a real fancy fire, you know, alarm deal in there? That way, man, it'd go straight to the fire station, because it's literally right behind us. I mean, we have a fire station, literally, I mean, steps, and in fact, some of the people use the parking lot sometimes when we overflow into that parking lot, that the fire department's been nice enough to let us do that. But I know we can't do that, I understand that.
I'm, I'm fine with, I mean.
I understand, I promise you understand that, but that's.
Enforce that sprinkler system.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I just don't see how you can let tents sell fireworks without any kind of sprinkler system versus a building. I mean, if it catches on fire, at least it'd be, would be contained in that building versus a tent.
I agree.
It's, it's, it's not necessarily the fire to put out, it's the occupancy. It's the people that could be inside of a structure or a building as compared to a tent. So it's not necessarily about the fireworks burning or blowing up or.
It's permanent, non-permanent.
They're not worried about the structure, they're worried about the people that could be inside a building that catches on fire. So it's nothing to do with putting out your product, though. It could do that, but it's a life safety issue on people being in a dwelling with exits and things like that, so.
I'm like Brad, though, the fireworks goes off, the sprinkler's not gonna put it out. They're gonna, everybody's gonna be trying to get out of there.
Yeah, sure. I mean, but, yeah, so it could, it could slow the growth of it down.
You could, though, get the fire department, get them a hydrant over there, that way you wouldn't have to bore under, get, pay that money.
Well, we still, well, the problem is, to get a fire, let me, let me tell you, yeah, sprinkler system, you have to have a six inch line, and you gotta have so much water, it's all about the measurements, and you have to have so much water getting to that building per, some, some size. It's, it's all kinds of, I mean, I, we've talked to, to so many people about it, it's just a lot of details, and so you have to have six inch line. If that was the case, we wouldn't have to go very far if we could have a smaller line, but we have to have a six inch line, which is, six inch lines can be over the Sanctuary Drive. You have to bring it all the way over from Sanctuary Drive across some properties to get to our property. I mean, it's, it's gonna be, that's what we're kinda, we just wanna go ahead and take this first step, make sure we at least get this approved with the sprinkler system, and then we can kinda go to the next step, hey, do we want to do this, or do we wanna stay where we're kinda, that's, we're in limbo, we wanna make sure, we're trying to figure out what we're gonna do.
Gotcha.
So, this will be the first step.
Y'all wanna set the public hearing?
Yes, let's, uh.
Motion by Brad, second by Steve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank y'all, thank y'all.
Appreciate it.
All right, next.
The next item is a conditional use permit for McLean Lodge LLC on Holly Bush Road. This property is located on the south side of Holly Bush Road. They're seeking the conditional use permit to expand their mining operation on Holly Bush Road. They were previously approved for a four acre exempt, and now they want to mine a hundred and twenty-five acres. That's a view of the property. It's a total of seven hundred and ninety-nine acres, and it's zoned RE one. That's an aerial view of the property. And that's just a vicinity map showing the mine area there on Holly Bush, right there. This is the four acre exempt now. These drawings were for the four acre. And then this is the mine area for the expansion of a hundred and twenty-five acres there. Of course, they'll be selling the dirt for construction projects in the area. They plan to reclaim that area as a sixty acre lake to serve as an amenity if they decide to develop in the future. That's a view of that property. They have applied to DEQ for their full mining permit also, and their application shows an estimated completion date of January of twenty-three. These are surrounding properties.
They think they're gonna be able to mine a hundred and twenty-five acres in three years?
That's what the application showed, is an estimate. Now, they have, you know, they're gonna show year one, year two, year three, but, you know.
They're gonna be, have a lot of trucks home out there if they get that much mined.
That picture.
I'm sorry?
No, the next.
Go.
Just from.
This one?
This property joins.
It's across the road.
It's across the road.
This property is, would be to the west of that property, maybe five hundred yards, quarter mile. This, this picture you're showing right here, where is the property?
What road is that, Holly Bush Road?
It, is that rodeo?
Yep.
This is Rodeo Drive in the property continuing on.
It would be east of there, yeah.
Is that the Holly Bush Road?
All right, so just so I understand, Holly Bush runs east and west, I thought?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
All right, so which side of the road is mine on?
Right, uh.
It'll be on the south side, south, south side.
It's gonna be on McLean's side.
It's pretty much across the road from, uh.
That's the map.
Mike, what's the, what's the name of the development that, uh, has a horse barn on it?
Uh, Clark Creek Farms.
Is that across the road from Clark Creek Farm?
It's close.
Yeah, there's not, yeah.
So they're gonna be traveling Holly Bush, mostly.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's the only road there. Yeah, I mean, that's.
In reference of the, of the, the lodge, where is it?
Oh, going toward Paila Hachi from the lodge, if, if where I'm looking there, uh.
Go east?
Yeah.
West?
What?
No, no.
East, you're right, east, east past McLean Lodge.
Uh, you go, there's a bottom down there, it's got a couple of bridges in it.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about now. Yeah, that's, that's what I was thinking.
Down there on the right.
Lodge, McLean Lodge is right here, that's the corner of Holly Bush and Clark Creek Road, so it's right there, McLean Lodge. This is on pass there.
So all those houses you were showing us, where are they located?
They were through here, right wing.
Uh, no, go back, that way.
That's what I was doing, oh, on down here? Oh, on down there?
Uh.
I think a lot of them are gonna spill off of Holly Bush, off of there, east toward the lodge, those houses.
Jake Bees is across the street.
Yep, directly across the street.
Cause there's nothing to the west of it, as far as those houses, maybe one of the houses you showed the picture, everything else is gonna be to the east of it.
Is this a big enough, uh?
That Clark Creek Farm should be right in here somewhere, on that side of the road.
Those houses were, see the writing, it says mine area?
Yeah.
Right in there.
Steve, is this a big enough potential hauling to, concerned about the road? I guess it depends on, it depends on the project.
Yes, uh, I mean, it is a state aid road, and we, this is the way we would direct them to, if they're on the off-road, to come there, but, uh, I don't know how much, I mean, twenty twenty-three, they're gonna be doing a whole lot of hauling if they mine a hundred and twenty acres.
A hundred and twenty acres, man, you're gonna be in there.
Five, six days a week, every day.
That's just a, a tentative date on their permit.
It's an estimate.
Yeah, it, it, I mean, it ain't nothing but a phone call to extend it.
Well, yeah, cause you'll never mine a hundred and twenty-five acres unless you're
doing the, uh.
Forty-nine.
Doing forty-nine project.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, hauling hundreds of trucks a day.
Which they did do that when we were doing Lake and Drive, remember all them folks up down Mountain Hill?
Yeah.
I run, until we stopped them late on twenty-four hours back.
Yeah, there's a lot more people live on close vicinity right there, you know, like by the road.
I'm gonna make a motion, we said it, and we'll just see what the public has to say about it.
Second. Motion by Steve, second by Dave. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye.
Aye, by plan?
Uh, we don't have any site plans today.
All right, Mr. Schley, you're here.
Yes, sir. Under the nuisance property hearing section of the planning commission agenda, we've got, uh, first item, item A, Jonathan Lawson, nuisance property at three ninety-two East Mountain Creek Road, this is District One. Uh, at this time, we'll open that public hearing, I'll ask Renee to demonstrate with the photos. Anyone here on behalf of Jonathan Lawson should come forward at this time.
Um, I was just gonna say too, that every one of these nuisance hearings today have been here before, they're all repeats. Uh, we had gotten multiple complaints about this property, just the condition of it before the mobile home burned, but now it's been burned and it's just been left.
Been, uh, burned, how long, what, when, you think?
Probably a year.
Year, year, year longer.
These pictures were taken in July of nineteen, and then these are the new pictures that were taken on the twenty-sixth yesterday.
Is anyone here on behalf of Jonathan Lawson, anyone?
What you, what you need to see here, this is on the corner, literally corner of, um,
Mountain Creek.
West Mountain Creek, and, um, East, East Mountain Creek, shoot, East Mountain Creek, and, uh, what's that, South?
Anech.
Anyway, it's right on the corner, it's, uh, uh, I can't tell you how many and how long we've been getting problems. He's been in here once before.
Okay.
And, um, but anyway, then he's, um, well, let's just say he's been gone for a while, and, um, it's, it's, it's just eyesore, been there forever. We've got, I, you know, we got quote to even clean it up.
Are the taxes paid on?
Uh, they were, they have been, let's see, um, well, he owes for the twenty nineteen, it shows that the twenty eighteen taxes were paid.
I guess it was still there at eighteen thousand. This process on this complaint started in two thousand fourteen, was the first. It was burned that long? No, that's when we started with the complaints.
No, what he, what he do, he haul limbs and stuff, and just piled it all up out there, and, um, and literally, it's, it's right on the corner of Main Travel Road, and then you turn on that other road, everybody lives down that road, uh, there's a lot of people live on it. So, you know, they've been more than patient, and, uh, then we've, we've tried to go through court, we've, and he just has disappeared, and anyway, he's been incarcerated. And, uh, at one point, his, uh, the lens of his name, at one point, I think, is, uh, some of his family said they take responsibility, is that right?
His mother.
We even sent them some numbers, people to contact, nothing's been done, nothing's been done at all. And, um, so, we're at a point now to, that I think, I, I would wish the board would go ahead and just clean the thing up, and then we, uh, if there's any way I can prevent a, anything else going there, I got a gut feeling some of the people on that road might even pull together by the corner. Uh, and it's well worth way more than what we're talking about, and this is a corner lot. So, what, what's the estimate that you got there?
To clean?
Yeah, if we're gonna clean it up.
Two thousand five hundred dollars.
Twenty-five hundred, yeah, it's, what is that, how big a lot? Is it an acre or about?
It's one point, uh, oh one acres.
Yeah. Actually, it's a little problem before he even got there, that other family was there. So, and then he wound up buying it from them somehow. But, anyway, I'd, I'd like to try to get it cleaned up, and.
Can the county put a lien against it?
Yes.
The problem is, is getting it paid off. We keep doing this, we just steadily spending more money going in the hole, you know?
Well, if we put a lien against it, they won't never be able to sell it until they pay off the cost of it.
That's correct.
He don't care about selling it, there's nothing there now.
Yeah, so, how that would work is, again, assuming the board, uh, is of, is in agreement that, uh, that the county needs to take responsibility to clean it up, it has that authority in state law. The cost of cleanup can be impressed as a lien against the property and collected in the same manner that property taxes are collected. So at the point in time that the twenty-nineteens are accounted for, uh, somebody is paying the twenty-nineteens, the amount of the property taxes would include the tax lien, the lien that would be impressed as a result of cleanup. But there's a process we have to go through to make that official, it has to be documented in the records, so it, it would be important to start that process as quickly as possible so that we can get the documentation together and get it into the tax collector's office for purposes of collection.
So whoever were, if, if, if he didn't pay the taxes, and whoever did, they would assume this, this, this would be taxes.
So let's assume that, let's, let's assume that no property taxes are paid for this parcel, whether it's just the taxes that are in the matter of, as a matter of course, avalon taxes, as typical, and/or the county's cleanup lien, it would proceed through the tax sale just like any other parcel that was delinquent taxes.
Then whoever bought it would have.
They would in fact pay the amount to remit to purchase the property, the tax sale would include the county's tax lien.
But go ahead and tell the rest of the story, how these people have gotten wise now, and they're researching, and they're not coming out buying all these, you know, uh, properties that.
I know Robin, who's, I mean, go, saw a lot of that property.
It's in the state, correct.
That's prime example.
So if it goes through the tax sale and no one bids, then it is struck off to the state, uh, it sheets to the state, and the Secretary of State's office would be responsible for it at that point.
Is there not a way that we could, if we're gonna start continuing doing this, to at least have it where, if we go clean up a parcel, that the parcel immediately becomes available?
So how that would work is, you know, you would not use the tax lien approach, and you would authorize your legal counsel to actually file suit to collect the amount of the cleanup, reduce that to judgment, and then collect on that judgment. It's a different collection method, it would be through my offices instead of through the tax collector. If it gets reduced to a judgment lien, we can actually conduct a sheriff's sale. A courthouse steps sale of the property like a foreclosure.
Yeah.
That's correct. So it can be handled that way.
Doing this and waiting years, you know?
Speed it up.
Good idea.
Yeah, that's y'all's option, you need to think that through because the cost to collect.
A lot more money.
You're not necessarily gonna be able to recoup that, right? So you're paying me to go through a fairly involved collection process, uh, that you may not be able to recoup. If you gotta, if, it's gonna be individual properties, Jay, you're gonna wanna analyze it, if there's enough fat, enough meat on the bone of an individual property, it may make sense to do it that way, cause there's a likelihood that your collection would be faster. It would be available to recover that cost more quickly using the process that I just outlined, as opposed to waiting for it to go through the tax.
I guess there's just no good answer. I mean, they're eyesores, but, you know, they're not gonna be, this isn't the first one, you know?
It's throughout the county.
No.
We can't afford to go do them all.
No, but I'm telling you, this one's a little different, if this was backed down off a back road, it'd be different. This is on a main running road.
Every road in your district's a main road. Every one you bring up, this is a main road.
Well, it was, it was, that's right, you're right. And it was actually your road. Remember, you, you left that on to me.
Before that.
You left that on to me. I was like, this is a state aid road right here. But, I need, I, I, I mean, if you see the emails, in fact, I didn't even realize, all of a sudden, the emails started coming, they didn't know we were working here, because it's just been, like I said, it's been sitting there like this over a year. And we've done everything, exhausted every way we know to try to get it cleaned up, had to start the process over again, even. But.
All right, all right, we need to, uh, have a motion, what we gonna do?
Yeah, so I'd like to close that public hearing, Jared.
Uh, no one's here on behalf of Mr. Lawson, I assume.
All right, so we're closed. At this point, we just need a motion to.
I would, I'd like to make a motion, hope you accept this, uh, to have it cleaned up, and trust me, I'm not trying to run out and clean up everything if we can help it. I'm trying to do everything I can, but this, this one is like a, in a bad spot. And the other one, by the way, it looks a lot better, it's, uh, it won't be a snake pit for those kids that live next door.
The house next to it still needs to go too, though.
Well, that's tied up in something, the house won't, the house won't, I think, just to clean up around it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, but anyway, I, I'd like to make a motion to accept this offer to clean it up and move on forward and put this on the rest. And, and at the same time, if we can do something to help recoup the money, I'm, I'm, I think that's great. I think if, if you try to sell that lot, I think it would sell just like that.
Okay, have a motion by Jared? Second. Second by Brad, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it.
All right, so what we will do at this point is, we will, uh, we, we have a process that we go through where we do a specification sheet, and so we'll work through that process where it'll be clear that folks that are involved in this cleanup business will have an opportunity to provide a sealed bid to us. What Renee has here is an estimate that she's received, but we're gonna need to go through the, the process of getting quotes on the, it is a two quote deal, so it won't be that involved, but we'll have a little spec sheet.
We, we hadn't had much luck.
We'll do a little spec sheet, uh, for this piece of property, and then what we'll do is, we will, um, just get word back out to you guys as to what that, what that expected cost will be, so this is for the purposes of an estimate.[1647.31] Yep, that, that's how we've done every cleanup we've done, Jared.
It must have only had one person or two.
I think, I think for the most part, we're getting like one response, maybe two.
We've, we've attempted. We don't hardly have any luck.
We just have to go through the process.
It's a pretty easy spec sheet.
Yeah, it'll be really easy.
How many have we done? I don't recall doing any. I mean, in my district.
I don't know that we have done any in your district.
I've got, I mean, I know I've got two.
We've reached out.
We've done less than five.
Over and over and over to people, different contractors, and we didn't even get a response from them.
You know, our people just keep their places clean.
Okay. It's a joke.
The, the reason we want a spec sheet is that we wanna make it clear to whoever does the work that, that when we say we want the property cleaned up, we mean it. Uh, we don't wanna get caught in a trick bag, Jared, where somebody comes out there and takes what they think they can resell and leaves us with issues.
We had, us having a spec sheet. I guess we, we'd word, I don't remember a spec sheet. I'd remember giving a price, cleaning this up. And then we approve, we, we come back and say, yes, it's cleaned the way we want it or not.
There won't be any further board action that's required on that, but we do need to secure the, the quotes on it. Just make sure. That means that our time on that matter is at a thin.
All right, thank y'all.
Item B is.
The computer's old word was talking, you know?
Item B is, uh, the Shanna Usri and tenants Jason Johnson and Tracy Price nuisance property at 120 Williams Road. It's a District Three parcel. This time, we'll open that public hearing. I'll ask Renee to demonstrate with the photos. Anyone here on behalf of Shanna Usri, Jason Johnson, or Tracy Price should be prepared to speak at this time.
All right, so these pictures were taken in November of 2019. We've gotten complaints about rubbish and debris, inoperable vehicles, appliances. Um, we've had this property back to 2013. We haven't been able to make contact with the owner. Now, these pictures are the new pictures. They have done a lot to get things straightened up. That's it.
I'm representing Shanna Colletti.
And you'll come forward, give your name and address.
Miki Scribner. I live in Brandon. I'm representing Shanna Colletti. She lives in Florida, and, um.
Give your address, please.
107 Ken Drive in Brandon.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, Shanna lives in Ponte Vedra Beach, Florida, and these are not her tenants that's mentioned here. Richard Flint lives there, and he has had someone come, tractors and things, to haul off the vehicles and appliances and things he had in the yard. Um, it is probably 12 inches deep in mud and water. He will continue to remove all the debris as soon as it dries up a little bit because the backhoe or whatever it was he was using has gotten stuck, and they had to have it hauled out. Um, can you give us some dry time to, for him to complete it?
I mean, this has been going on since.
Off and on since 2013.
2013. I know there's probably a rotation of tenants that's living in there, and, uh, I mean, we just, she.
This is the first letter she has received, and she received it on the 19th, and it's dated the 6th, but it didn't get to her till the 19th.
What are you showing Renee?
We corresponded with her through the years. A lot of the mail comes back, but we have sent it to that address in Florida. Someone else signed for the mail there once, I know, in the past. We've never heard from Ms. Uh, Usri until yesterday, but she did call finally, so we have a contact number for her.
And that was the first correspondence she's received.
Somebody signed for her, you said?
Somebody signed for her mail at Florida. Um, it wasn't her name on the, on the envelope, you know, on the return thing, but it was a signature at that address.
I mean, we, we can give her a little leeway on this, but, I mean, we just, whoever they rent this to, I mean, they need stress. It's got to stay clean.
Yes.
Well, clear the nuisance and then.
We're gonna clear the nuisance and, uh, we'll give them 30 days.
Better get more than that. It's not gonna be 30 days.
Rain's unbelievable.
Have we got more pictures of it?
It's close to the asphalt. They can drag it off.
Are there more pictures?
Yes, can you, uh, can we back that lot right there?
I mean, that truck's gonna get gone?
Yes.
Right?
Yes. They couldn't get the backhoe and things to get that last truck. I think they've hauled off three, which was left by a former renter.
Hold up right there. And, and then they're also gonna get.
Yes.
10 and?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean.
Well, this kind of stuff like that, it's not, it don't require a tractor.
It's because the, the ground is covered in water.
I'm looking at it.
Well, the good thing is, we do have her contact information now, so we ought to be able to make this expedite situation.
Correct.
And, and let her know that I, I take it serious.
Oh, she knows it.
I mean.
She's well aware.
We're gonna stay on top of.
But like I said, that was the first correspondence she received, and the first that, you know, she, I got a copy of it. So, um, it will be taken care of, and she'd be glad to sell it if anybody's interested.
Now, also, this stuff right here, it looks like you're right on the corner, you know, there's, something needs to be done with that stuff right there, too, that's inside the house.
Looks like the window's out.
On his porch.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. It will be taken care of.
Ma'am, if it's viewable from the road, it, it needs to be tightened.
Yes.
You know, it's like, what, you want your house?
Exactly.
So that, uh, so that there's no confusion, I wanna make it clear on the record, you're, how are, how are you?
She's my ex-daughter-in-law.
Okay, all right, so there's a family connection there, and, uh, your, your appearance here is really just an accommodation so that she didn't have to come from.
Yes.
I got you.
From Florida, okay. That, that makes sense.
And I'll.
You don't have an ownership interest in the property?
No.
Okay.
But I will stay on top of it for her.
Please, and, I mean, can we, we're gonna get your contact.
Please.
If I would tell.
I've got some in my district, if you would.
I'm not related to them.
Yeah, we just make sure we have your contact because, I mean, if it's a problem getting in touch with Ms. Usri.
Yes.
If you can.
And she's at the Mayo Clinic. She can't even receive calls during the day.
Okay.
She's in the cancer department.
I don't know, I mean, depends on this weather. I mean, 30 days is probably not enough, but I don't know, I mean, I don't wanna say six months, 'cause that's too much. I don't know. I think.
I can stay in touch with you.
60 days, well.
60 days unless.
If we get a dry week, it can be hauled off there.
We'll, we'll, we'll keep monitoring.
Okay.
If y'all get it cleaned up, just contact office.
Would you like my name and number?
They'll get it, brother.
You got it? No, we need it, please.
Thank you.
Yes, so for the purpose of the record, uh, to make it clear, we, we're closing that public hearing. I believe Brad's motion would be to go ahead and declare the nuisance.
Correct.
But to delay any action on the declaration for a period of 60 days and allow them to monitor.
All right, motion by Brad.
Second. Second by Steve. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Let me ask you something, Craig.
All opposed? I have it.
On, uh, if you do a 60-day, and there was plenty of time, this is for just the future, there was plenty of time and the weather was fine and a 30-day, and nothing was done, and, you know, it was very, weather's conducive and everything. Is there any way we could then notify them we're gonna move it on up?
They could, they could, you could do that. You're not required to do it, Jared, because the public hearing, they were present at, or they had an opportunity to be present at. They were notified to be here, and you made your decision on the record. There's no reason.
Yeah.
Uh, legal reason to, to require additional notice. It, it may be good form to do it that way, and if you want to.
The only reason I said that, if they know, okay, it's going on to court, they'll get out there and get it cleaned up then, mo, sometimes. That, that was just a thought. It's, that's my.
Yes. So, so each individual case can be handled, however, but there's not a requirement for the staff to further notify at that point. They just go ahead and file the affidavit.
Yep, okay.
All right. Mr. President, if we're ready to move to item C, we'll do that. Uh, this nuisance hearing for Fonda Lester as registered agent for All-in-One Real Estate Resource Group, LLC. This is a nuisance property at 13 Sharp Street. It's District Four property, so we'll open that public hearing. Uh, if Ms. Lester or someone on behalf of the real estate agency is here, now's the time to come forward, uh, and Renee will demonstrate with the photos.
All right, so, um, this is a property that we've worked before. We've had, um, multiple issues here, but most recently, um, the complaint was in December of 2020.
We have not gotten December of 2020 yet.
I mean, 19, sorry.
December of 2020.
Speeding things up.
He was going along there pretty good, and then he hit that one.
The bourgeois states. And these are the new pictures now that were taken on the 26th. Ms. Uh, Lester has called, and she's been talking with Kathy about it. Um, there's also been a complaint that somebody, that the previous owner is living in an RV on this property as well. Some cleanup has been done.
Who lives in the house?
No, in an RV, uh.
This, uh, do you want me, okay. My name is, um, Fonda Lester.
Back here, and they saying in that.
Yeah.
Storage.
Yeah, I'll explain that.
Okay.
Um, my name is Fonda Lester. It's 711 Lenox and Jackson. Um, I'm, I'm pretty sure y'all know this house because I bought it at an auction, and it was, had a tree on it probably for two years. So, um, it was in pretty bad condition, and I bought it not really seeing the inside or anything, and the previous owner lived in it, and he's crazy. He's crazy, crazy, and I was, um.
He's, he's not here today, is he?
I hope not, 'cause he carries a gun. So, um, when I, when I first bought it, it actually, I've had it about a year, but it, it actually took me about six months before I could actually do anything with it because I, I couldn't do anything with him, including getting, you know, he didn't want me to touch the tree. He didn't want me to do nothing. So, I had to get a rapport with him, is what I did first, and.
Wait a minute, you bought the house, right?
I bought it, but I was.
So why was he still there?
Well, he had like a guardian alightum, I guess, or what you call it, where he was, they were trying to get him into a place or something, and I called and called and called this attorney, 'cause he apparently has been to court like many times. I mean, the neighbors have been complaining, according to the neighbors, they've been complaining about him for years.
So you couldn't get him out? You couldn't get him out?
No, and even going through the court system, couldn't get him out. So I thought, well, let me try to do it a different way.
Did you know him before you bought the house?
No, I did not know him, but he's like an old veteran and his, he's not all there, but he does carry a gun, so everybody was like, just be careful. But, um, he, he appears to like me, okay, but the trouble that has happened with the, I actually bought him a, a mobile, not a mobile home, a travel trailer, trying to get him off of the property 'cause I thought, okay, I started working on the property with him still living in it, and then when he still wouldn't get out, he wouldn't get out of the bedroom. So when it came down to the time, I had gutted the kitchen, and he's still living in it. So I, I bought him a travel trailer, and then when I was not there, he moved it into that warehouse shed thing in the back, and now it's stuck there because there's been so much rain. I don't know how to get it out.
He's still living in it?
He's still living in it, and I can't even get in there.
The sheriff's department can't get him out?
Yeah, so far, I have not been able to get him out. Now, I have been working with him. I told him, look, even if I have to like buy a whole bunch of plywood and put it out, we gotta get this thing out of here somehow. But, um, it's so wet back there right now, I don't know how we're gonna get it out. But as far as all the stuff, we were taking all of his stuff out of the house, 'cause I kept telling him, you need to pick what you want and do something with it, 'cause I was trying to get him to move it. We took, um, two dumpster loads away from the house, and just since, we got a letter back in December, since December, I've taken seven loads out, and if, there's still a lot of stuff there, but a lot of it's like, there's some metal in the backyard. But some of the things, though, are things I'm not really sure how to get rid of. He still claims they're his, but he, 'cause he used to do like a, a boat cleanup or boat fixing something. I don't know what he used to do.
Fiberglass type business.
Yeah, some kind of fiberglass boat fixing boat. So he has some, um, things out there that he says that belong to other people. He don't want me to touch them, but they're, they're like, um.
Tell you what, we're gonna do you a favor, and we're gonna declare it a nuisance, and this will go before a judge, and the judge is gonna help you get this taken care of. Okay, I, I make a motion, you won't be, we'll be, we'll be.
So what district was this in?
Well, I, I'm actually, I'm, I'm, I'm complete with the inside, and I have a buyer, I have, that wants me to get him out.
Yeah.
The only thing left to this house. Yeah, I can't sell it now. I'm, the only thing left is I got to get the help, I'm waiting on the health department to, 'cause I gotta put a new treatment plan in and clean the yard up and get him out. That's the three things left. Everything else, pretty much.
Right, we're gonna help you.
You got one big one, don't you? Get him out.
Yeah, you ought to see what it used to look like.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, it's still gonna take a little while, but you can tell him that it's about to come before a judge, and he's gonna be forced to leave.
So he's just basically been squatting.
I don't know, Craig, is that the best method?
Yeah, so, let me give you guys a couple of thoughts here. Um, that, it, just anecdotally, we don't have facts. This is not a judicial body. We don't know all that's going on with this situation, but just, the anecdotal information that we do have suggests that there may be a competency issue here. And so, it's, it's possible that if it does get moved up to Justice Court, and it's obvious at that point that this gentleman is not competent, then that could bawl things up somewhat. Uh, 'cause the court's gonna be sensitive to whether or not he has the capacity to understand what he's being charged with. Don't forget that when we get to the, to the point where we have declared a nuisance, and it is a justice court matter, you've actually, that is actually a criminal court proceeding, and so there are some limited rights that are afforded to individuals, even though we're talking about small stuff here, misdemeanors. There's still some rights afforded. I could see the judge appointing him counsel. If he's not capable of, so you're gonna, on the backside, you're gonna get public defender bill, so.
Well, see, is he drawing a, he's drawing so evident a check, and that's why he's.
Yes, sir.
He's living free, but that's what he's eating and whatever.
Then I, I suspect that he has, uh, some, some financial means at his disposal. The, the issue that I, as I see it, and of course Larry's not here, but, uh, if there really is a competency issue here, then one way to deal with this situation is, is for it to be a chancery matter, but that's gonna require somebody taking responsibility to actually go and seek a conservatorship over this gentleman. If you can get a court order establishing conservatorship, then you'll have means at your disposal at that point for, uh, decisions about his care, his location. That's taken out of his hands at that point. And so I think the issue of relocating him could be addressed better through chancery court than through a justice court nuisance proceeding where they're not, they're just not geared for that. They don't, they don't deal with incompetency situations at Justice Court. Well, let me rephrase that. They, they don't do it officially.
Craig, when this, the first time that this come up, it would come before Judge Farley, and Judge Farley knew him, so we went out there with the constable, and at gunpoint, you know, the owner there told us what was going to happen and what wasn't.
At gunpoint?
At gunpoint.
Like the, the owner had the gun?
Oh, yeah. And he told everybody when we walked up.
That's before you bought it?
That's before I bought it. That's what I'm dealing with, yeah.
Yeah, I can't plead for shares, but they've been involved with this pretty extensive right there, and I know they had several problems right there. Yeah, it was a, it was a, which, I mean, the, the constable knew him and the judge knew him, so, I mean, it was not a.
Tony, where, where is this?
Uh, the bourgeois. It's a corner lot. I mean, it's a, this guy is.
I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, so, again, the.
I'm talking to that guy.
The.
Uh, wow.
The, the issue is to, uh.
I know exactly where it is now, who it is.
Uh, what, but how do we handle a problem? I mean, you're, you're talking about.
I, I'm giving you what ifs. I'm giving you what ifs. I'm giving you, I don't know for sure's. Um, it's possible. It's possible that you could go ahead and just move it up to, uh, to Justice Court and let the process unfold and see what happens, Steve. I, you know, at this point, we're, we're playing a guessing game, but, uh, my, based on what we're hearing in here, the anecdote.
I would think you wanna, uh, step in or somebody.
Yeah, Craig. I can't sell the house without.
He won't be at Justice Court, only she. She's the owner.
Yeah.
I, I understand, but I suspect that at the moment in time that she is served with something to appear before Justice Court, he's gonna be involved at that point. So my hope would be, her legal counsel will know what's going on.
All right, and.
Yeah, that sounds like a good, what we're talking about.
I understand.
Well, what?
Yeah.
What, what, can you do that?
I think it's thoroughly short shot. I mean, other than this, you're gonna have to go to chancery to try to get someone to step in and take over the point.
I would like for her to, to visit with the chancery clerk about the possibility that a, that a conservatorship proceeding could be undertaken through the chancery clerk's office.
And just avoid this?
Yes.
Find out too much good, I don't believe, Jay.
What do you want to do? Put it off 30 days?
You know, what, what could happen is that, yeah, I, I, I like the, I really like the idea at this point of going ahead and making the declaration. But just insist that what we want to do is to give enough time before we have to take the Justice Court option, give enough time to see if we can pu, push this through the chancery option. So I would say, let's make the declaration, but maybe sit on it for 90 days.
Okay.
But she can't even really, she can try to clean up, but she can't really clean up. He's claiming that's something.
That's correct. It's a recurring issue.
So we're declaring it a nuisance, but she can go home, tell, or go to his place and tell him that you're going to court now.
Yes.
It's gonna have to be resolved.
He was the owner, and he let, I mean, it was foreclosed? Is that?
Correct.
Yeah, how'd you end up with it? You just bought it sight unseen?
I did. That's what I do, but as long as, you know, I'm, um, I bought it thinking that.
It was a good deal.
Well.
It was.
I mean, I, I, I got it. I mean, I, I, I got it where I was thinking it'd be a good deal, I just didn't realize that it would be so hard to.
Evict.
To do this, yeah.
Yeah.
And I also thought since he had, that he'd already been to court before, that, that, and he had a guardian at law, that it would be easier, but it's not.
So you own the travel trailer that he's in?
Somebody in chancery then.
We don't, we just don't know. Uh, my question would be, why would the GAL have allowed it to go into foreclosure if they're doing their job? That, so that doesn't, something's not registering correctly.
Tree in the roof.
Yeah, yeah, so something's, something's not correct there. Something didn't get handled, or we don't know all the facts.
He never owned the house, he just lived there.
No, he also did.
Oh, he did, oh, he did own it, oh.
Does he have access inside the house or just just as a?
No, he doesn't, and see, that's another thing, he's, since he's moved into the other place, I don't know what he's, I, I can't, can't even go in there, it's no telling what it looks like, I don't know what he's doing. Because um, we've had to lock it up.
And does it have sewer out there?
No, it does not. I, I feel like if someone were to come out and do a, a well check on him, they would haul him out, that's what I think.
Okay. I mean, that's.
But I mean, I am, as far as the stuff, I'm working on the stuff.
You just would know, the one day you come here, our, our sheriff is not here.
Our, our, our chancery.
Well, that's not unusual though, but.
He's, Jessica and him are in training in Austin, Texas.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe we just need to go down.
So we're gonna declare a nuisance and our attorney's gonna try to get in touch with folks so we can get him taken care of.
Well, if he's in the trailer, we just gonna hook up and relocate him.
So how many days?
Yeah, pull him down district.
But you said ninety, I seen you locked the lock.
Yeah, but you talking about chancery court.
I, I'm talking about a process that's gonna probably require that long just to get it into the chancery voice system.
Wow.
Oh, you got a problem.
So you ain't selling in no time soon.
Yes, so the chancery court's not gonna do anything until there's two doctors evaluations that indicate that this man is not capable of taking care of himself. They're not gonna do anything without, without medical documentation that he is in fact incompetent and has to have.
He's living in a shed.
Absolutely. I get that.
All right.
Deal, we gotta talk to the legislature about how to get somebody declared incompetent, you gotta have two doctors.
Okay.
So you better give ninety days to Whitfield to get anywhere.
I think you could sell it to somebody else, sight unseen.
Have them committed.
Then you're not having them committed?
Just show the front.
Craig, can he not be committed?
That's, that's just the process I'm talking about going through.
Move that mattress first.
Yeah.
Well, you can go ahead and move that now.
To, to doctor evaluation.
All right. Thank you.
Wow, this is.
But you couldn't, you couldn't call and have them sent to Whitfield and they evaluate him there?
No, you're gonna have to have some sort of judicial oversight of that process.
All right, so we're gonna close the hearing there. And uh, Steve.
Motion, just what Craig said.
Second, motion by Steve, cleared nuisance, second by Daniel, you have discussion? All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Ninety days. All right.
We did best we could, sorry about that.
All right.
Jay, you closed, Jay, Jay closed the hearing, so item D is the Jonathan and Stephanie Ball nuisance property at five fifty six Acorn Lane. It's a district five property. I will open that public hearing. Um, I'll ask Renee to demonstrate with the photos and uh, are you Jonathan?
Yes.
Oh, okay, Mr. Ball is, is present to appear on behalf of the property owner.
All right, so we received a complaint uh, on this one, a new complaint uh, January twenty fourth about the condition of the property. This is in Oak Grove subdivision, these pictures were taken on January thirtieth.
The other day.
Yes, this is while we were doing some real, like, we were moving stuff around the garage and it wasn't even three days later than this guy comes to our door.
These are the new pictures that were taken yesterday.
Not Chuck? Chuck come to your door? Oh, the lady, okay.
Yeah, we've been working over in your neighborhood for, you know, a year or so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I've read multiple complaints about, we've actually had you come in for about stuff out in the driveway, but your, your garage door won't even close. You're gonna need to get that taken care of.
Uh, plan on taking care of that at tax return.
When?
Tax return. It's been filed and just waiting on it to come back.
Okay.
Uh, I'm gonna put some strength numbers on the door, uh, reinforcement numbers on the door that actually, actually lets it close it up. There's only, there's only one member on the door, that's the reason why it's done this in the first place.
Okay, but you're gonna get that replaced, it's not gonna be that same garage door.
No, it's gonna be the same garage door, but what it's gonna be, it's gonna be enforcements on each panel that keeps it from bending. That way it can be shut and closed or opened.
All right, well, I mean, you know, I hope y'all can get everything closed up in the garage so it's not all, cause I know for a while, it's been where you couldn't even close it if the garage door did work. So I mean, you're just gonna have to get your properties tightly so that your neighbors don't have to look at all your stuff too, you know? Like that right there, that, that's how it usually looks. So I tell you what, I'm gonna, I'm gonna declare the nuisance and I'm gonna give you thirty days to get it taken care of. And if you don't have it in, in condition, you're gonna go up and see the judge.
Okay.
All right.
Second.
I close the hearing, make the motion, declare nuisance, second by Steve, you have a discussion? All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you.
Okay, item E, Mr. President, is the Nicholas Rhinebarger nuisance property at one eighteen Oak Grove Drive. It's a district five property, we'll open that hearing. Uh, we'll ask Renee to demonstrate, if anyone is here on behalf of Nicholas Rhinebarger, please come forward at this time.
All right, uh, this property is in Oak Grove subdivision also. Uh, we received a complaint back in January about the condition of this property. These pictures were taken January twenty fourth. And then these are the new pictures that were taken on the twenty sixth yesterday.
Would sell firewood?
Old barrel been moved? Yeah, it got moved to the side of the house.
It's still out there?
Mm-hmm, right there.
Oh yeah, I, I might, we can close it, I make the motion, clear the nuisance.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Steve, you have a discussion?
What, what's he doing, busting firewood?
Yeah, and stuff out there, and he's got an oil drum with this trash out there. And he lives on the corner of Oak Grove and something, so, yeah. All right, you have a discussion? All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it. All right, that it. We uh, have most adjourned.
Some of them.
Motion by Brad, second by Steve, all the papers say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Call our board supervisor, me, back door, see we have our honorable mayor here. Um, next, on our agenda, we have.
Caroline.
Come on up, Caroline.
Caroline, give her, she, take Caroline, she didn't waste any time.
Right, it was a good timing.
I tried, I tried, just glad that radar's not in effect yet. Um, okay, so I don't know if you guys have, um, we have gotten a quote and are working on another for our Flowood office. The, um, as y'all know, we extended the office into the second suite. When that was done, the security system was not moved to encompass the cameras, panic buttons, even the door that was added that is, I guess, could be an entry door, but it's actually an exit door, the back doors, none of that was hooked to the alarm system. So basically, what we are working on now is quotes for getting that entire suite, both of them now, um, hooked up and ready for security. So, um, I don't know if y'all have any questions over that? What we're, what we've gotten is, is the whole kit and caboodle from a quote perspective, so. This one is twenty-three thousand.
Oh my God.
We will have to get another quote.
Whoa, that's one quote?
Yes.
Good, great.
And a- at some point, there was a prior quote, I don't, that was before my time, um, so these are current. But this is, this is bringing the entire, um, both suites as one and, and bringing it all online from a security pers- perspective.
With, with that ticket though, it's gotta be double quoted, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we're just waiting on the second one?
Correct.
That seems like awful lot of money for.
I did not.
Panic button and some cameras.
It, it's not just, y'all, the thing about the, these offices that I, I don't know that it's ever been, um, previously thought of this way. We're a bank, I mean, we're a bank, we are the central repository of this county. And from a security perspective, it needs to be treated that way.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, I think get the other quote and then, just see where we're at. I agree, I agree, you gotta have the security, you need the security there.
Yeah.
Um, I went in there the other day, looked around and it's, I mean, it's, it needs the security side of it. Jay did a great job designing the layout, we ran there, so I don't know how y'all designed that, but he did a great job on that. But we, we do need, I would like to also look at, um, there's one area when you come there to the left, that there's not really an access point back to it. And maybe we could get Ben to go back over there and look at maybe just kinda cutting the door in a little, it's, it's a.
There's an area, I say a door, it's not even a wall, it's a, um, I don't know, it's a, I guess it's a wall, it's a four foot wall.
It is, it's a half wall.
But you got no way of getting access to walk somebody back to the back. If you got one way in or out, the right side, to get to the back. So if we just have a little swing door or something right there, I think Ben can build that for hardly nothing. But I think that would give you access right there. It's a four foot bar, basically, if they cut them a little pathway back through that spot, but uh, we definitely need some security.
They did that by design though.
I didn't know how you designed it.
No, they did that by design.
Did they get the wires pulled back up?
At this point, it's an unusable space, because you can, your, your constituents can't get back there. The only people that can get back there are one person. Well, there are times when paperwork has to be, I mean, there, there's times when it can be really usable safe.
Several, several of the girls.
In the back room?
No, 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 no.
You walk into the left, there's that little open space where you used to walk back up to the counter.
Mm-hmm.
There's a four foot wall, that's maybe four foot high, maybe ten foot long, that's across there. That's you could get, you could walk back into the back area, right there.
But before you get to the back area, there's a.
Around to the other side. Several of the girls there had mentioned it'd be good to have access to that little spot. It's just a matter of sitting, cutting a little hole in it and putting a swing door or something there. It's not a secure door.
Maintenance guy looked at it, never said anything.
Somebody lost, man, cause that, that counter went like this, right? The original counter, they, they still got access to that counter.
So look, this is the main counter right here, one time Josh can say, this is the main counter. Then to this, there's a side, and there's another four foot high, right there. All right, so this is the main wall, main wall, this is the only access they have is right there.
Yeah.
This is just cutting them a little gap right there, where they have access, this is like a little, I don't wanna call it a break room. The break room's back in the back, closed off.
Yeah.
Um, and this is a wall like this, right, it's kinda set up in it. This is just giving them access, if they got a person comes up here.
For like deliveries or something.
Yeah, a- anything to be able to get access to this area to it.
But do you want access to that?
Well, I mean, you could use, there is a, I mean, there's a decent amount of space back there that you could put two little tables, desks, whatever. I mean, there are numerous times when paperwork has to be completed, people just who can't stand up for very long periods of time, it would be easier to have, I mean, there, there is an area where you could totally utilize it from, from a public perspective.
Yeah, we got that whole side's not used now.
Yes, yes.
Really what that is, is dead space because of that little area.
Because of that.
Gotta move to the next building.
Yes. That's, you're right, you're right.
If, if, if we, uh, if we're, if we're okay with the thought process that we want to uh, provide the security that the tax collector is already clearly indicated is gonna be required for safe operations, secure operations, all the, the reasons why, you've already heard. If that, then I wanna walk you through real quickly the, the steps of the process to get us where we wanna go uh, and make sure that we, we don't have any issue with how we need to handle this. And, you know, we've got visitors with us even now, who like to look at things such as, how did you handle that? Right?
I, I would definitely like to hear it, cause I think it's important.
So, this, this, this would be a good primer on that. The, the way that we wanna try to handle this is our IT guys and Caroline uh, should sit down uh, with, probably with Bridget involved as well at some early stage and come up with the specifications for the project. That is, th- these are the things that we wanna, that we wanna include in the security protocols, right? So IT needs to help design and fashion that. There can be communications with, with various vendor representatives about what sorts of things are available to provide that security, but it needs to just be at a kind of, at a high level. Once we have a spec package together, then what we need at that point is for that to be given to the purchase clerk and the purchase clerk then goes and provides that information to vendors who quote that spec package. Everybody understand that? So, wh- uh, where we get into an issue with those who would question how we do things for a living? Where we get into an issue is when we have something from a vendor on the front end and we say, this is what we wanna go with. It's then that, what that looks like is, okay, we've selected the vendor ahead of time and we've cut out any other potential participation and that's not what we've done at all, but that's the way it would appear. And so, uh, I would propose, let's take the documentation that we've got from the, the one vendor and let's start working on a spec package that we can put together. None of this has to take very long, it can be done very quickly to put the spec package together. But get it together so that it can then be pushed back out and allow good competition among the vendors to come back and actually provide. And, and if you do the spec package on the f- front end, the way that you feel like you, you know, that, that, it's got all the details in it, then you're gonna end up most likely with what you want. But you don't get in trouble on the backside of having quote, cut out other vendors. So, we can, we can quickly move through the process to get us where we wanna go. But this is a perfect time, and I want, I apologize to Caroline, cause she's, she got to be the guinea pig standing up here talking about her specific project. This could have been any other department across the county that we, because this is, it's just not intuitive. We don't think through these things.
I, I totally agree with you and I just wanna put some emphasis on it that we want it done quickly.
Quickly.
Because of the mindset, the amount of money you carry over there.
Right, and I appreciate that. And along with what Craig is saying too, just know to, from an IT perspective and working through RFP and that thing, we're thinking through this for what's needed in this location along those lines too. Not as immediate as, as that outlier, but um, we're, we're trying to do it so that we can incorporate things over the years.
Thank you.
Did you say that that, uh, the cords that were across the floor, that has not been taken care of?
I don't know if they have or not, when I was in there, it had not, but it may have been.
I was told it was taken care of.
Yeah, they were out there working on it, so I'm, I'm pretty sure.
When I was there, it just hadn't been done yet, I'm sure it may have been done now.
You're right, it was not before you were there, but it had.
Okay, I was just told that it had been handled, I just wanted to make sure.
And it may be now.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's just a time, thank y'all.
All right, Mr. Slay? Yes, if you don't mind?
There's nothing on here.
But, but we knew there would probably be something, right?
I agree.
Uh, so Greg Thompson's here on behalf of our right away acquisition agents. He has one parcel he wants to talk to you about, it's a landowner counter offer. Uh, we don't, I don't wanna do this in executive, cause it's such a small amount of money, but, so we're gonna go ahead and take care of that right now.
Mr. President, I appreciate y'all letting me come, I know I don't normally come on these meetings. Um, and it is an accommodation on my own personal schedule. Uh, we have, for y'all's consideration, a landowner counter offer on the parcel that Caleb brought to you for establishing a justice compensation last meeting.
Thank you.
This landowner, uh, he's only, he's asking for five hundred and twenty dollars additional compensation. Um, we offered eighteen fifty, he's asking for twenty-six twenty for a five hundred and twenty dollar administrative adjustment. Um, Caleb estimated the shrubbery and that hedge row in the front using the Marshall and Swift, which is like the database that we get all our numbers from. Uh, this landowner has uh, supported his counter offer by getting a quote from a local vendor. Uh, Mr. President, you have a copy of that quote, little, um, Slay has one. Local vendor quoted a little bit higher than, than uh, we came up with on our estimate. So it's totally up to y'all on the administrative adjustment, um, whether you decide it's verified or not.
We need a motion. Do we need a motion?
Yeah, yes.
I make a motion that we go with his.
Recommendation?
Yeah. You will?
All right, motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Jared, you have a discussion? All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Is that adding it or is it?
All right, so add it. All right, now motion for. All right, now most approved. Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Jared. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
If we fight this for three hours, we've spent more money than what we're going to pay.
Might be three minutes if you.
That's about right.
I know, but it just, boy, just, it's rubbed me raw.
This is, um, this is a property that I normally would have acquired at the very beginning of the process because it was a simple acquisition. Um, it's, it's not something that usually is this late in the, in the acquisition timeline. So, that may have affected, you know, how we ended up with a landowner counter offer.
All right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Appreciate you.
All right, that it.
Yeah, we did all we could do.
That's, that's all I have. Okay, Ms. Laura.
First item I have this morning is authority to transfer one million received from the state of Mississippi in that Senate Bill thirty sixty-five for assistance with Gunner Road extension from the general fund bank account to the extension fund that we have set up that's required, the separate fund that's required by law.
So, why didn't they send the two?
Why didn't they what?
Send the two.
It's already been sent. And it has to go into an account separate from our general account.
Oh, this is the MPO money.
Right, and then this has to come and go into another separate account.
So, what about the, what about the state money?
This is the state.
We have everything now.
Yes.
Well, the MPO is federal.
We, we have the state money. We got that.
Okay, all right. Now, a motion?
Some move.
Motion by Jared.
Second.
Second by Steve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Ayes have it.
Thank you. The next is the discussion of, um, potential action on the proposed change, uh, order for the EOC center that, um, Carl was talking about this morning on the re-roofing project.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Daniel.
Second.
Second by Brad. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Ayes have it.
That discussion in EOC makes me nervous, you know, because in the same sentence, the discussion, it says EOC.
It all happened right before you got here.
I mean, the discussion in EOC just makes my timer go off.
Next item I have is, uh, approval to renew our workers' compensation with the Liberty Mutual. Uh, this is for the volunteer fire departments in the amount of sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and authority to issue that check.
Some moved.
Motion by Daniel.
Second.
Second by Brad. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
And then if there's any questions on the agenda for Monday.
I just had, um, I'll probably, I'll probably talk to you about it after it's over. I won't talk about it right now.
Okay.
On the, on the consent. Don't let me forget.
Okay.
What about additional business?
I do have a couple of items. The first one is, uh, a discussion of the standby generators. I did receive, um, the study back, uh, from Schultz and Wynn. They were the ones that we had asked to, um, take a look at it, the schematics and everything. They have come back with an estimated cost of, um, two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. And then there's that, and I'm sorry that I don't understand all this. There is an ATS with bypass isolation that would be an additional cost, um, of forty, and then a natural gas fuel.
Forty thousand?
No, forty thousand. I'm sorry.
Transfers.
Yeah, okay. And then natural gas fuel generator, the generator cost, um, of sixty, an adder and fuel. Well, it's the generator, I'm...
So, you've got a diesel option and a natural gas option.
And a gas option, right. And this would be the service line.
Your natural gas option is a sixty thousand add.
Add.
So, it's three hundred thousand.
Well...
With the natural gas.
With the natural gas option.
Three hundred and forty if you get both options. That is the automatic transfers. So, you're looking at a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar price.
So, we're going to have three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Larry's door from the lot.
And then, on top of it, uh, this, this company, SNW, can perform the, uh, design of this system, drawing specifications, front-end documents, and help with the bidding project and the awarding and construction of all that. And their, uh, professional fee is approximately ten percent on the awarded cost. But y'all had asked for us to get this information, and this is what the study has revealed.
Can you email me that study so I can read it?
Yeah, I'd like that, too.
Email it to me.
No, I'll get it to you. Um, just wanted to let you know, there's no action needed now. Y'all can, I'll, I'll get this out to you and let y'all have time to look at it. And the next item that I, I need to add is, um, authority to renew the Baron Threat Net license agreement for three years, beginning March one, and that would be through February twenty-eighth of two thousand and twenty-three at nine hundred dollars.
You need me to add that?
We need to add.
You have another one?
Um, under that also, uh, to authorize JH&amp;H to proceed with the CMRLS roofing project, if y'all want to do that. Those are the two adds.
All right, make a motion to add those two items.
Yeah.
Motion by Daniel.
Second.
Second by Steve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, first one is the Baron Threat Net.
I'm making a motion to approve it.
Motion by Daniel. Second by Steve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Ayes have it.
And the next item is authority for JH&amp;H to proceed with the roofing project at the library.
As far as doing the engineering.
As far as doing the specifications and everything needed.
Ballpark on what that is?
Oh, it's three hundred thousand.
I mean, to, to, to draw?
No.
Oh, no, no.
To redo the...
I was about to say, whoo. My chest bothered me a little bit there.
We need to look and see what, how those units are on top of.
Yeah, there was a lot. Well, it could be more than that.
I guess my thing is the cost of JH&amp;H to design the roofing job.
Well, we're going to have to do it anyway because it's got seventeen leaks in the building. So, I guess.
The, the estimated was a hundred and fifty thousand on the roof, and that's not included if you went with the new air units and all that.
Yeah, so we got to do it regardless of.
Before we got done with it, it was over two hundred. I know.
I, I'll make.
Right, two hundred and fifteen.
I'll make a motion that launch JH&amp;H to design it.
Okay.
And figure that out.
Do whatever research.
And we'll figure out what we got to go from there.
We got to raise the roof and everything.
Motion by Daniel.
Second.
Second by Steve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd like to. On C, I don't know when you add it to C, Ms. Laura. Hopefully it won't be a bit different. Uh, but we need to add that striping truck because that's going to take longer, too.
Do what now? Where?
What C are you talking about?
I'm back on the agenda.
Oh, Monday's agenda.
We'll talk about that Monday.
But she can add that to it, I guess, to put on there to talk about.
I mean, we can discuss it today, I guess.
Janice, I think Janice has something.
I think we need to put it under another one because that's authority to advertise, and we could do a separate one.
So, Janice, just add that to the agenda about the striping truck from Monday. Just to talk about.
The D.
Right, we're going, we're going to do it.
Y'all want to, just do a D?
I'm talking about today.
I don't care.
And this was...
Next week.
Okay, I'll get with Janice on that.
You got plenty of time.
Yeah.
So...
You want to talk about today? You got all your stuff?
No, I just wanted to make sure we got it on the agenda for Monday.
Oh, okay. No, we can't talk about it. All right.
Okay. All right.
All right.
Take it.
Yeah, our, uh, is that it? Our, our mayor from Pearl, I thought he was not coming, so I told Janice I put him on the agenda. Uh, Jake, you want to come up and address the board?
That's right. I won't take too long. And I apologize about the miscommunication I had. You're going to go to on Tuesday, and then Jay and I text. And in the meantime, so I don't want anybody to think, because I understand, I don't want anybody to think, just jumping on the agenda spur of the moment. But I do, I'm, I'm coming here asking, um, for a request, uh, to the board supervisors. Recently, in the past couple of years, we've spent a lot of money on, uh, infrastructure. And, uh, listening to this board, just like in listening to our board, it takes a lot of money to do things. I realize that. And I'm here to ask for some help. We, um, we're doing some road bonds in Pearl. We've got our financial, um, financials in check. They're stable at this point. And we're doing, um, some things to make sure that we're doing, doing things in an orderly fashion, I guess. Kind of get our stuff together. This year in our budget, it was approved for two million dollars for us to address drainage projects. Uh, we're investing in some regional detention in some areas where we think that can combat flooding in the Pine Park areas and also in the Skyway Hills areas. Now, at this point, after budgeting that money, the funds were there, uh, to do that. But, uh, during the process, the, uh, opinion of cost was not correct. And that money was supposed to do these detention basins that we have, which is, that's, that's digging holes and that's having precision machinery go out there and, and do it for you. But also with that money, we wanted to do the bridge decks on eighty. Uh, from a standpoint of a mayor, those bridge decks from about Little Willys to Autozone would, uh, provide a lot less flooding in the city. And from an economic development standpoint, it would cause us to have a different perception. I think each and every one of you know, Ross Adams comes to Pearl as soon as it starts raining hard, and he's sitting in, guys have had it too, out, uh, north part of County. So, today, I'm asking for, uh, board supervisors to consider a request to put these bridge decks in place on Pearl's behalf. And, um, and it's only because of the fact that we're, we're currently working with our engineers. Those engineering fees have taken us out of some of the, some of the funds that we needed to do the detention basins. So, we're trying to get the detention basins done. We're also trying to get the bridge decks done.
But, Mayor, those engineering fees that get you, I'm telling you right there. I tell you what, them engineering fees over there, I'm glad you brought it up.
Well, so, let, let me say the flip side. The engineering fees that we didn't realize on the opinion of cost was the wetland permits through a core of engineers. We have two nationwide wetland permits through the core engineers. It's going to cost us four hundred thousand dollars before we even get started.
Was that for mitigation?